Now in our continuing saga of nine months into COVID-19, just when you thought maybe it was safe to go back in the water. The day before Thanksgiving, I believe, PDE and the State Department of Health hit us with something new and Dr. Ruscia in her comments will touch on that and where we are and where we think we're going. Dr. Ruscia.
Thanks, Mr. Feinberg. Actually, I've organized the comments onto a few slides this evening because there's quite a bit that's happening. And some of it unique to Delaware County. So there are five components to what I'm going to share tonight, and I'm going to do my best to be really clear about which ones are coming from the Pennsylvania Department of Health and PDE for all schools and which are coming through the Pennsylvania Department of Health unique to Delaware County. So if we're looking at those five components that we're going, can we go to that next slide? Thanks. Alright, so what I'm hoping to accomplish tonight is to overview that recent PDE publication. And I'm going to go back to my disclaimer that I was using many times when we would meet during the summer. This reflects 8:51 in the evening on December 30. Subject to change as early as tomorrow morning if something else comes out from PDE. But there are updated guidelines or guidance from the Department of Education and the Department of Health referring to how we respond to COVID-19 cases in the schools. I will explain that tonight, and if there are questions, I'll answer as many as I can. We have been told that further clarity from PDE in the form of a frequently asked question document is expected. So there are questions that we, when I say we, my colleagues in district, out of district, questions that we have and are hoping to have answered by that. What we anticipate, the implications of the new responding to COVID-19 enhanced mitigation is going to mean for us. The first is pretty easy. The first was an updated order requiring universal face covering. And actually, we could have gotten a little graphic of a checkmark there and put it right next to that. I think we're going to be good with everything that relates to the universal face coverings. The requirements for us of what we have to do following the identification of positive COVID cases in schools is new, and that's what we'll talk a little bit at length about tonight. Then the third topic that we're going to discuss, on November 18th, Delaware County Council requested, made a request of Governor Wolf. And it was a request for an enactment of additional mitigation strategies just for Delaware County. In response to that, the secretary, the Pennsylvania Secretary of Health, Dr. Levine, ordered additional mitigation efforts. One of those states that events or gatherings of more than 10 people indoors is prohibited. And this is until at least January 2nd. The document goes on to read that it clearly specifies that does not apply to classrooms. But it also specifies it does apply to activities and to school sports. So briefly this evening, Mr. Dunnegey is going to talk about how we and the other schools in county and within the Central League are currently approaching that. The fourth thing I want to go over with you tonight is to let you know what we've been doing since the last time that we met in trying to address some of the staffing concerns that we shared with you last time about filling absences when folks have to be out. And then finally to clarify the two recommendations that are on the board agenda this evening. So moving along and looking at that responding to cases of COVID in schools. The Department of Health and Department of Education are enacting what they're calling a rolling 14-day case count. There's so a need to track cases daily by school, which we've been doing. I mean, we've got a tracking of that. But exactly how the 14 days will work has yet to be determined. You know, for example, for some schools, day one was Monday. My question is, day one for us, if we return students next week, does that become our day one? And is it the 14 days? And then we start another 14-day cycle after that? That is, that's the understanding. If we start on, if we bring students back on December 9th and we don't have any cases reported that day, maybe we don't have any reported December 10th. And maybe December 11th is the first day that we have something reported. Then my understanding is December 11th becomes day one for us. And then we're counting for a 14-day period. And when I finish here and we get to the next slide, you'll see why the 14 days starts to matter. Ultimately, based on the number of cases and the size of a school, one of the recommendations can be to close school for a period of time. A concern that my colleagues both in district and across the county have is this is very likely to give very little notice to families. There is, you know, is the potential that, you know, based on these counts, we now need to close for a period of time. The important thing here for us, for all of us to be mindful of in the district is if the investigation of a case or the contact tracing that is necessary, the cleaning and the disinfecting can be accomplished in a faster timeframe, then the length of that closing may be shortened. So specifically, what are we talking about with that closing? Everything is based on the size of the school. Our five elementary schools would fall into the category of being identified as medium-sized schools. You look at the full enrollment, you are not allowed to say, well, we're in hybrid, we only have half of the students in the building. Alright, so that was one of the questions that we did ask and received an answer to right away. So all five of our elementary schools would be categorized as medium. And both of our secondary schools would be categorized as large schools. So if we move right on to that second column that is there, if there are between four and six cases within a 14-day period of time. Right now, we have been told that those cases are identified as those who were contagious at a point in time when they were in the building. We're waiting to get some of that in writing. But that is what was reported from a meeting with people at the department. But it has not appeared in writing yet. So when there are anywhere from four to six cases, we could be looking at the potential of a closing from anywhere from three to seven days. What would make the difference for that? The difference would be, do we have all of our contact tracing? Is the Chester County Department of Health able to do all of the case investigation that is necessary? I feel very confident that I'm going to be able to report the level of cleaning that we do on a regular basis. You know, we don't wait and do a whole lot of cleaning all at once. We, our staff are doing intense cleaning at the end of each day and in through each evening. So I'm hopeful that the level of cleaning that we are going to do, that we have been doing, would be satisfactory unless there's something new or a different way that they want us to approach that, then certainly we'll abide by that and learn about any new ways that we can clean the building. But we will be looking to do whatever we can to follow those guidelines, make sure that the school is healthy and safe, and then get it back open as soon as possible. In that medium-sized school, if we went above seven cases, then we could be looking at the potential of a 14-day period of closure. Moving down along the line, our secondary schools, as I said, they would be constituted as large schools. So they can have a few more cases before we would be looking at that, you know, at these potential closures. I think it's important to note that the closures are part of the mitigation strategy because our county is in substantial on that matrix. We are not in substantial community spread. It is not low. It is not in the moderate level. Delaware County is in the substantial area. So because it's substantial, and that's the only one that we put on the screen for tonight, we will provide a link for the full document and people will be able to see what the mitigation strategies and recommended closings are if we, when we eventually start to get back to moderate and then low for community spread. So there are the two pieces out of the Department of Ed and the Department of Health that impact every school district across Pennsylvania. Nothing is different for any other district than what I shared with you unless they are in moderate or low community spread. Moving on now, what is unique to Delaware County? And that's where I had said County Council back at their November 18th meeting made a request of the governor's office that they look at enacting additional mitigation strategies for our county. And that impacts indoor gatherings, as I mentioned, to 10 people. That impacts athletics. It impacts club activities. And I'm going to ask Mr. Dunnegey if he'll talk a little bit, just to give you some insight into what we're doing there because we all know that it is important and believe that it is important to, in a safe and healthy way, keep our students as involved as we can, again, being very mindful of their safety and their health, but their mental health as well. Mr. Dunnegey?
Thank you, Dr. Ruscia. And like Katie said earlier, the students are doing a great job of figuring out creative ways to do their events either in person or on Zoom. And I'll give you a quick example. We're trying to figure out how to do the candy cane drive this year for charity. Okay, so Mr. B was on a conference call with a student and the teacher today for a half hour. So everything takes a little more time, but it's definitely worth it. So in the sports world, I had a meeting this week with the Central League Principals and Athletic Directors. The 10-person limit, just so everybody knows, is 10 people, including coach or coaches. So anything indoors, you're only allowed 10 people. So Ms. Robson, our athletic director and the coaches are working. And they've come up with a lot of great solutions as to how to get 10 people potted. So what we're going to do to start off is that we had to break the different teams who are indoors into pods. And the indoor teams are wrestling, boys and girls, basketball, and cheerleading. Okay? One of the most difficult ones to figure out is cheerleading, believe it or not, because they do everything together. So it's hard to break them down and do fundamental work. So our teams are going to start out, you know, we can't play any games or even think of playing any games till after January 2nd. And that means scrimmages, games, any type of competitions. Other schools, the league is getting creative too. So when or if the ban is lifted, schools that can participate will participate if, you know, if they feel comfortable and they're ready to participate. If you're not ready to participate, whenever your district decides you participate, then you'll just jump right in. So it's going to be a fluid type schedule, which will be a little bit different than in past. So we might have to play Marple Newtown four times this year instead of, you know, playing every team twice. So it really, so they're trying to figure that out, and that's in January. So between now and January, we have to, for any indoor sports, have to be under the 10-person limit and then not intersect with any of the other teams. Too. So that's part of the planning. All the normal protocols are still in place, you know, masking and all that, normal screenings, that all stays in place. There's no fans. We're not sure, you know, when we'll get to fans. We're going to continue our live streaming when the games start. And again, that's down the road. Our primary goal is just to get started in a safe, slow manner. So the 10-person actually helps us. If we didn't have the 10-person rule, we'd have all 25 students together, you know, and the girls' basketball team are all 30 cheerleaders together. So this kind of, again, in a weird way, is a good, nice, slow start to the season. And then we're hoping, you know, things turn around a little bit so that we can get into the competitions. And then it gives the athletic directors, the principals, and, you know, the players time too to adjust to whatever the competition rules are going to be. In practice right now, you know, we're going to be masked for most sports, most of the time. And then we have indoor tracks going outdoors, you know, as long as the weather holds up. So we're taking our precautions, but we're also being creative and trying to figure out ways to do this safely. And the 10-person pods you inherently pod you. So it kind of helps us a little bit to get started and then see whatever the next mandate is.
I know a real quick overview.
Thanks, Pete. The fourth topic that I wanted to sort of highlight for you this evening is to let you know what we've been looking at in terms of how we're trying to address some of our staffing needs. And first and foremost, we may get a little help in that, you know, the CDC released new guidelines on quarantine length, that there's a possibility that it may be shortened from anywhere from seven to 10 days. So we are awaiting our communication because recall, the Chester County Health Department is our authority. So we are waiting to see what their direction will be from them. But that, like, we can't underestimate how helpful that change will be, you know, provided that it still creates a safe environment. But if it's determined by the health professionals and authorities that that is a safe environment, it definitely will be an assistance to us with our staffing. With our bus drivers, we do have low numbers of students. So we've heard, you know, some are not riding the buses. And George has already been able to start condensing some of those runs and do so without extending the length, you know, of the run. So again, we'll say to parents, you know, if you transported your child before and, you know, as we got into the school year, sort of thought, no, it's okay, I'm going to let my child take the bus. If you could go back to transporting them again, that's a big help to us in condensing those units. Because the bus driver staffing, the greatest challenge to that is the requirement of the license. And, you know, not something that you can just go out and pick up in a week or so. So, but we do feel that looking at shorter less populated buses, that we can begin to do some of the condensing there. We spoke about the DCIU Guest Teacher Program when we sent our communication out right after, just before the Thanksgiving break. And we're continuing to publicize that, let people know that if they want to become involved, and that's going to help us in the long term. There is also a program at DCIU, and we're going to do our best to make sure everyone is aware of it, that retirees can return, you know, to the classroom. There's, through the program at the IU, they would actually be working for the IU and able to do that. So you hear a lot on the evening news about doctors and nurses coming out of retirement just to help with the COVID situation in hospitals. There's just as much of a need, if there's any teacher who would be willing to, you know, help us out during this period of time, but they thought they couldn't because they have already retired. You know, we'll set them up through the Delaware County Intermediate Unit to do that. We have not thus far, you know, made use of our, we've sort of used it as a last resort, large group areas like an auditorium. And probably because it's not ideal. It's not, you know, it's not ideal to take two classes, even if those two classes are, you know, 10 children in one class and 12 in another and have them socially distanced in an auditorium with one, you know, one teacher there. That's a long day. There's a lot for that, you know, for that person to do. But as I said, it's a last resort. We have not utilized it. We can begin to, you know, take a look at what we're doing there. For Haverford Online, if there's a short-term absence, meaning that a teacher has to be out for one day or two days, we're not talking now about someone who would be on quarantine. We're going to ask those teachers to have asynchronous assignments available so that we can utilize the substitutes for in the building when students are present. That does not mean that we're prioritizing in the building over Haverford Online. I want to be very clear, this is if I'm a Haverford Online teacher and I need to be out for one day or maybe two days. If I am a Haverford Online teacher and I need to quarantine and unfortunately become ill or am not able to continue with my instruction online, then we will get a substitute. We're not going to have the children engaging in completely asynchronous learning for 14 days. And we may find ourselves in a position where we are notifying families that, you know, because of staffing, this is different from what I talked about at the beginning of my remarks. But we may end up where we're notifying families with very short notice to say that, you know, a teacher has to be out. We do not have a substitute for the teacher and those children in that particular class, you know, may need to return to virtual learning. They're not quarantining. They're returning to virtual learning because it's a staffing issue. So there are a few of the things that we have started to do. You'll see, we've got a couple, I think maybe two substitutes on the agenda for approval tonight, so that, you know, every little bit helps. We've got even some instructional assistants on the agenda for approval tonight. So, you know, we continue to try to get the message out there and are glad that even, you know, during a holiday time, we've been able to keep moving there. And finally, the fifth component to my remarks this evening is to clarify. There are two items that are on the agenda. One is amending the Health and Safety Plan. And the purpose of that amendment is to allow for timely response to COVID-19 cases if necessary. So to allow, if we needed to, you know, we work with the Chester County Health Department and it's a three-day closure or a two-day, or just one, you know, a one-day closure. Even if we were to call a special meeting, it requires 24 hours of notice. I know that as dedicated board members, you'll meet anytime. That's not the concern that I have. I know that if I said to you, we need to meet about something, got you the information that you would make the time in your schedule to be there. My concern is the notification to families that we would have to wait a full 24 hours before you were able to meet. So I'm looking at it in terms of, you know, when we have situations where it's either based on staffing needs or, you know, based on the number of cases, to be able to efficiently and effectively respond to some of these changes that have come from the Department of Health and Pennsylvania Department of Education and just being mindful of the timeliness with which we would be able to inform our families. I know the agenda item mentions district, school. You know, hopefully you've worked with me long enough to know that I I don't know that I would want to close the whole district for a 14-day period of time without coming to you and saying that, you know, this is what we're looking at. That's different. Unless someone is coming in and saying that we have to. But to be able to respond to cases. And the second recommendation that is on there, you know, as noted on our 1123 agenda, we publicized there that we would be bringing some kind of recommendation this evening that we would return to our hybrid model as of December 9th. So I just wanted to clarify those two and give you a little bit of background as to why they're on there. Thank you.
Questions, comments from the board? Now, I will say, Dr. Ruscia, you had mentioned that Delaware County is in the substantial category statewide. At this point, it's my understanding that 66 of the 67 counties in the state are now in the substantial category. So it's you know, this
What, unique to us?
Right. Bridgette?
Thank you. My question is, I know that the students are in virtual education now and there's some questions still about when the 14 days would start. Do we have information now about the number of COVID cases that we would be reporting this week and how those how those relate to those state numbers that would kind of out of the gate put us in a situation of needing to return to virtual, you know, based on the size of the school and the number of cases?
Yes, we do have information. I won't go into a lot of the detail around it because we've not finalized everything, but there's been a lot of activity at the high school this week. Or I should say, there's been a lot of activity with high school students this week. And the number that we are, you know, looking into could potentially have us discussing with Chester County Department of Health, you know, are we closing a grade level? Are we closing certain classrooms? It's going to be trickier at the high school because of the movement, you know, throughout the building. And the movement throughout the building is necessary because you do not have one group of students who take all of the same, you know, have the same four blocks all day long. So that makes it a little bit, a little more challenging. But this week, there were a few on Monday, there were a few on Tuesday. And actually, in our conversation on Tuesday, we were saying, would this be enough to have us now in looking at notifying people Tuesday night if we were in session that the high school would not be open on Wednesday? We still have a lot more questions.
Okay, so right now, the recommendation is for district-wide to return to the hybrid model on December 9. Is there a chance that as we're collecting more of the COVID case datas pertaining to the different schools, that there would be an announcement prior to December 9th about the ability for each of the buildings to open to hybrid on December 9th?
That could happen.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, Ari.
Um, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Ruscia and your administration for navigating Harrisburg. It doesn't look easy. And you're changing on the fly. Just so the community knows, you could talk about opening and closing schools at your discretion in a snow day situation. So we already have a model where you have the authority, correct, to close school without board approval?
That is correct. Yes, Mr. Fein, that's correct.
Okay, so so it's not necessarily an unusual circumstance that is causing us to necessarily amend this plan. My question about amending the plan though is, if it's at the state's urging or mandating that we close, why do we also need you to have permission?
Because the state continues to say that it is a local decision. And that these are the guardrails by which we operate. And it is, in Pennsylvania, always a local decision.
So kind of talking out of both sides of their mouths, it sounds like.
Consistently.
Wow, okay, that's very interesting. And I'm really glad to hear you mention the mental health of our students when talking about activities and sports. It's a very important aspect of what you and your staff do here at Haverford. You're not just educating children, ABCs and 1-2-3s.
Okay, next up, Kristin.
Thanks. So, Dr. Ruscia, in one of your slides, you mentioned that the state said if, in the event we need to close a school, that if contact tracing, cleaning, et cetera, can be done in a lesser amount of time, we could potentially reopen sooner. But I'm also thinking back to our last meeting where we were discussing But I'm also thinking back to our last meeting where we were discussing kind of the backlog and contact tracing. And then related to that, just the burden that that is putting on district personnel and the resistance we are getting from some families and actually cooperating with the contact tracing process. So I guess this is more a statement, but I just, you know, that's written in there that is state language that we could open sooner. But I mean, I think the reality on the ground is that given the contact tracing complexities that we're probably going to be looking at just meeting the, the recommended timeline as opposed to opening any sooner. Is that correct? Or that be your assessment as well?
You're, you're spot on. That, that, that's an accurate assessment. The contact tracing will, will be important. You know, the cooperation in contact tracing will be important.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Next up, Antoinette.
And nine months into this, and I'm still talking before hitting unmute. So I, I think this was the, the way that you laid out was really helpful and I appreciate you doing this so quickly with, you know, nothing new came out from PDE today, I think, even though we're having a board meeting. So that's good. So I, I have a question about the, the 14 day numbers. I know we don't know everything about it yet, but I guess, because I think that the way that the district is reporting cases now is in a chart that's updated weekly. Is that right?
Yes, yes. It's on Sunday evenings.
Okay. So I guess like with this being the 14 day rolling average or the 14 days rolling numbers, are we going to have something that is, that is put on the website every day? So that people can see, you know, what happened? And I know that, you know, with contact tracing and things like that, it doesn't, it's not like someone was there and then, you know, you know for certain that they were positive and they are contagious or anything like that. But I guess, I, I think it might be helpful to have something that's updated more than weekly. And so I just wanted to know what the, the plan was for that.
We do know that we are going to need to have something. I mean, as, as a parent myself, like I want to know, are we close to?
Yeah, right. That's what I'm thinking too.
Or are we exactly how, you know, we don't have the specific, the specific details of that worked out yet, other than to say, we know that we need to do a little bit more on a regular basis beyond just Sunday evenings.
Okay, great. Yeah. I think, I think that'll be really helpful for people to sort of see. And, and I think, I mean, I think folks need to keep in mind though, too, that if there was some sort of event that happened outside of school, that maybe, you know, there were a lot of folks at, who are inside of our schools. And, you know, that those numbers could happen all in one event, all in one day. And so I think, you know, I don't think that people should put too much stock in, oh, we only have one case in our 14 days. Because, you know, the next day could, could have 10 that are all from some, I don't know. I'm not going to speculate what folks are doing, but you know, some, something like that. But, but I do think it would be helpful for people to just sort of see in more, more real time. And then I, I, I am really happy we're talking about mental health and of our students. I think one thing that I've been increasingly concerned about is the mental health of our teachers and staff. And how, how, how much I think that they are really putting in everything that they have to making the, the virtual work, the hybrid work, the in-person work and, and going above and beyond. And so I don't know what's possible that, that, that district can do for them. I know that we're constantly trying to say how appreciative we are and, and everything. But I, is there a way that we could make a break longer or something like that? I mean, we have winter break coming up. I think it's well deserved for people. And they really, really need it. And I think it's a week and a half maybe for, for teachers. You know, I don't need an answer tonight or anything, but I think that with how difficult this period is in teachers and staff's lives, I think it's, it's worth looking into to give some more time off. And I, that implicates a lot of things like snow days or, you know, not snow days, but you know, days.
Required number of days.
Required number of days and everything. Yeah. But I just, I think the burnout and the mental health is real. So something that I've been, I've been looking at and wanted to bring up.
Why don't we, you know, we can put our creative juices to work and, and see, see what we can, see what we can come up with.
It doesn't look like we're going to be using any snow days. Thanks, Antoinette. Next up, Dave.
Hey there, Dr. Rishi. And I want to thank you, by the way, for clarifying that change of policy earlier. It's, and just to reiterate, so it's not a change in precedent. More as it, it's more of a response to the, I'd say contrary, but to the guidance that we're getting from the state along with the policy that's still a local decision. We're kind of trying, we're kind of looking tight rope here, it sounds like. So the reason for this is not so much out of, it, it's more of a need to, to comply with these two tricky kind of, you know, the, the, these tricky forms of guidance that we're getting. So I want to thank you for, for clarifying that. I had one very quick question as well regarding, was on the slides earlier. You mentioned the, it's a certain number of cases in schools, there'd be a 14 day closure. The 14 day closure. Do we know, if you don't know, it's fine. Do we know, was that based on CDC's previous guidance of a two week quarantine?
I don't know, Dave, what they based, you know, what they base that on. I, I do. If I could just say, you know, it's up to a 14 day. So, you know, it could be less, but, but I, I don't know, you know, what they're basing that on. You know, we have made the request and, and I believe she will be available, the director of Chester County Health Department to attend our December 17th meeting. In the next two weeks, we'll get some more questions answered and, and she can answer any remaining questions that we have.
Sure. I mean, and, and if you're the way, you mentioned that the VNFQ coming out fairly soon.
We're hoping.
Let's say you're hoping.
We're hopeful.
Sure, sure, sure. Well, I'd like to know, I mean, if we could put the question up there to them, if we could just put one of the questions up, up there would be, you know, based on CDC's new guidance, could this change? I mean, obviously, obviously they get, let it open ended already. But I mean, I just wanted to know if there's a way that we could put that up there just so we can get some more clarification on that. Because a lot of these closures, you know, 14 days, 10 days, it does make a difference in, in, in people's lives when they have to worry about childcare. And especially because we're going to be putting a lot of pressure on folks in a very short period of time. So this is, you know, the, the snow day analogy that Ari brought up, I think is very apt. This is like a snow day. But it's for an extended period of time. It's for, you know, loser of 94 type of snow day where you really have to, you know, make some, you know, make arrangements. So if we could get some more clarification, there probably won't, won't give us much, but put it out there. That'd be.
We'll ask. Yes. Could I just interject here? I'm sorry to, to jump in, but could you clarify if 14 days or any of the days that you're talking about, is that calendar days or is like 14, 14 calendar days would be two weeks, 14 school days could be closer to three weeks?
My, my initial response that I received is that it's 14 calendar days.
Okay, thank you.
Because I had asked if, if, if we were notified like on a Thursday that we needed to shut down for three days or something, could we count Friday, Saturday and Sunday? And, and the response was yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Bridgette, you have another last question. You beat me to it by about three seconds. So, so, so thank you. Any other question? Calendar days or, or, or school days? So thank you. And that's, yeah, that did for me. Thanks.
Kristin, you're up again.
I think Susan had her hand up, so I'm going to defer to her and then come back to me. She had it up before I did.
Okay.
Thank you, Kristin. Dr. Rishi, I want to talk about contact tracing. Because in my experience and what I'm listening to and reading, contact tracing is such an important piece of this. And it just seems to me in our schools, it's not that important a piece because we don't really, we have to kind of rely on our nurses, our secretaries, who are we relying on to make sure that we are contact tracing the best we can to make sure that this isn't being brought into the school? I, I find it complex.
A lot of it does, as you said, a lot of it does fall to the nurses. I can tell you principals are involved with it. Nicole is here this evening. I don't know if, Nicole, if you want to talk about, like Nicole has talked with families. It's, it's an all hands on deck. What, you know, when we're, it's like whoever's available. Or in some instances, who knows that family? And might be able to get, you know, convince someone to share who the child was with. So go ahead, Nicole. Sorry.
Yes. So it involves pretty much everyone. We, our nurses, we meet weekly and we go over, you know, contact tracing, any questions they have. They were trained, you know, we met with the health department several times at the beginning of the year as the guidance was changing, our contact at the health department would meet with myself and the nursing group to go over any questions we had. And we have been continuing to meet weekly to make sure that we're up to speed on whatever the newest version of the guidance that comes out that we have from the health department. The principals are heavily involved in contacting families and making sure that we notify people who need to be in quarantine, that we're getting information from families. And then, you know, it's not just students and staff in schools. We have our maintenance department, our transportation department, food services. So we've trained members of those departments in, you know, what the expectations are from the health department. And we've met several times and, you know, they basically contact me for scenarios and we walk through things and Mr. Parker is involved as well when it comes to staff. So it's, it's a, it's a, you know, a lot of people. Yep.
Keeping in mind that Nicole is, is in charge of people's services, which is in itself, one of the biggest jobs I think we have. If we looked at a job description, it's monumental as it is. So not only is it special education, but it's also people's services. So now we've asked her to take this on. We taking anything off of your plate, Nicole? Don't answer that. But that's what has happened. I believe it's happened with Jennifer Saska. She is now trying to work on next year's curriculum when she's still working with teachers to teach synchronously and how to do this, that, or the other thing with hybrids. We have Sarah who's trying to keep the Chromebooks online. So all of those people in the administration, your administration, Dr. Rishi, trying to keep us going while really kind of doing triple duty. I have to let them know how much I appreciate it. I think the contact tracing for me is, is the biggest issue. Because I don't, I worry that that important piece is getting lost because people won't talk about it. So I just feel like I would like the world to hear that if we don't know it, we can't help. Wear your mask.
Thank you.
Care of your children. Yeah. Good job in the administration wing and, and Greg Parker's in HR too. Everybody's throwing it in.
Everyone is.
Everyone. Yeah. Good job, Rob. Good job.
So I have hands up from Kristin and Laura.
Thanks. So I just want to reiterate for the public that this new guidance from PDH or Department of Health and PDE, Department of Education, an attestation letter that the district has signed on to, I mean, this, we need to follow these requirements in order to have any in-person learning at all, like without signing on to this and agreeing to, you know, all the information Dr. Rishi showed this evening, we would not be able to do in person. We'd be 100% remote. So I just want to make sure that, you know, the public understands that. Looking at the new guidelines tonight in terms of, you know, cases and building sizes and timelines and whatnot. We've just taken a very fluid situation and it's become even more fluid. So again, if, it's, yeah, it's, it's actually mind boggling. And then added to that, we have 11,000 new COVID cases in PA today, 187 new deaths. Mainline health system is at capacity. Montgomery County is at or nearing capacity in their hospitals. And we have nine ICU beds left in Delaware County and we have over 500,000 residents here. I, I'm not trying to paint a glum, glum picture, but the picture is, it's grim. It is, it's scary out there. And what the district is trying to do within this context is truly remarkable. And I just, I really want people, the public to remember that, you know, our teachers, our administrators, you know, they have families too. They're dealing with this too. They're living these dark times as well. And they are trying to do everything they absolutely can to ensure that your children or our children have safe, meaningful learning opportunities in the face of all this. And I know we can't make everyone happy 100% of the time. That was true in normal times. But it's even more so true now. So again, I'm just kind of mind dumping here, but I, I just wanted to give a little bit more context to what we're working within and just ask for people to have, I know we're all under tremendous stress, but if you can just find it in your heart to have a little bit of compassion for what our district staff members are up against. Thanks.
Thanks.
Kristen. Laura?
Yeah. So I'm glad that we are going to have the staff and the ability to contact trees and all of that to go back to a hybrid model as soon as possible, especially for full K to 12. But given the numbers, I know that there are going to be a lot of people that just aren't comfortable sending their kids back. So I guess I'm wondering, what alternatives do people have at this point where we're at in the academic calendar? If they are not comfortable returning to hybrid on the nights, assuming we approve it tonight?
And we will communicate to parents. I don't want to make a blanket statement right.
That's fine.
Be applicable for every grade, you know, every grade. A lot of this is, is, is more easily solved at the secondary level than it is the, than it is the element. And so much of it has to do with availability. But, but we do know, Dr. Grusman, that that's one of the things that we, when we put communication out to families, we need to try and guide them, you know, if you are concerned about this, consider these options here. And we, we want to be able to provide an education for all of our students. We don't want to see our students leaving us.
Yeah. So I guess should parents then be looking for some kind of a communication prior to the ninth? Okay, great.
Very general communication going out tomorrow to ensure that everybody is, is at least aware of where they can continue to follow these changes and how they can get more information about it. And then more detailed specificity to follow at, at the beginning of the week.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm still showing hands up from three people who already spoke. Is, is there anybody that hasn't had a chance to, to speak? Susan, are you good?
I'm good. Thanks.
No, I, I'd just like to mention that, you know, this latest guidance, if you will, from the state, we were, we, we got the heads up the day before the Thanksgiving holiday started. And this attestation document that Dr. Rishi and I had to sign that allowed us to continue in hybrid as opposed to being 100% virtual, as Kristin mentioned, had to be signed by Close of Business on Monday. So this whole scenario is something that, you know, that happened in relatively short order over the four day holiday weekend. You know, as you're hearing, you know, all the aspects of this tonight, and I know we'd all like for things to be more stable and less fluid. But unfortunately, it's the environment that, that we're living in. We're doing the best we can. As we've said all along, you know, the safety of our students and our staff is paramount. Under the circumstances, we're trying to do the best we can with all aspects of our children's education. You know, we, we heard a lot of kudos from the board for, for staff and, and our administration this evening and that by no means diminishes our understanding of the burden that this has placed on, on parents and families. And we just have to hunker down and hang in there. Any other questions for Dr. Rishi? Any other questions for Dr. Rishi on this topic? Okay.
I will look forward to a meeting where I can talk about another topic.
Amen.